All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. I decided to get some gum. Okay, Tracy, are you ready? Okay, counsel, ready to go? All right. I'd like to call to order the Kaiser City Council in regular session for Monday, February 5th, 2018, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Counselor Ryan?
Here.
Counselor Freeman?
She is excused.
Counselor Reed?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Counsel President Parsons?
Here.
Counsel Herrera?
Here.
And Counsel Anderson?
Here.
Thank you very much. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The audio will be posted online, and so what we're gonna do is to make sure that the presentation from the school district is video. We're gonna reorder the agenda just a little bit, and we'd like to start off with the Greater Gupsor Neighborhood Association Annual Report. We love you guys, but we also have some great pictures on Facebook of some great stuff you've been doing, so come on down.
And for our school district representatives, we're thinking it'll only be a few minutes before we're ready, so... Or say several hours, so you guys just get comfortable.
I do love it here. Welcome.
Welcome, Mayor. My name's Mark Kellier. I'm a Kaiser resident, and I'd like to introduce our president for 2018 for the Greater Gupsor Neighborhood Association, Suzanne McConnell.
Yay!
The Greater Gupsor Neighborhood Association, also fondly known as the GGNA, has had a busy year, and we are empowered to... Our purpose is to empower our neighbors and improve our community. That's basically what we try to do by providing information and also, if we need to, advice and a little action. Our boundaries are basically are the same as the Greater Gupsor... Or, excuse me, is the same as the Gupsor Elementary School. So basically, we are north of Country Glen and Labish Ditch. Some people call it a creek. On the east is Kaiser City Limits roughly along the east boundary, along Shamawa Road, including Perry Street and Lucinda Avenue neighborhoods. On the south is Shamawa and Lock Haven, and on the west, the east side of River Road to Country Glen Avenue. We have about 3,100 households in the Greater Gupsor Neighborhood Association. Our meetings are the third Thursday of the month at 7:00 PM at Gupsor Elementary School, except we do not meet on June, July, August, December; the rest of the months, we do meet. We have a variety of topics. Some of the topics in the last several years have been, of course, our Kaiser Miracle of Christmas Lights event, which we'll talk about a little bit later. This year, we also passed amended bylaws in January 2017. We've had the mayor come speak to us and the Kaiser Police, Marion County Civilian Emergency Response Team CERT, Clag Creek Watershed Council, Kaiser Fire Department, Kaiser Code Enforcement, the Community Development Folks, Marion County Coordinated... Marion County Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, and as well as Kaiser Parks, and we're always looking for new programs. One of the things our new president developed this year is we had a meeting, and we were trying to think outside the box for some of our topics. In February, we are gonna have the Community Safety Night with the Kaiser Police, and we're hoping... It's still tentative, but we're hoping to get some of the local superheroes to also attend that meeting, so we can talk to them about the things they might be doing. In March, we want to have Kaiser Parks Discussion. We've always had a great deal of involvement with the Parks Department and City of Kaiser upgrades and our parks and issues, and so we want to spend that whole night reviewing what has happened so far. Also, in April, we want to have a Household Safety and Childproofing Demonstration, so it's a family event. And then, on... In September, on 20th, after folks go back to school and we take a summer break, we want to have a... We're gonna have a cyber safety for all members of the family. We're gonna have computers and people there talking about how you... What to look for in your... On your children's computers and how to keep them safe and how to keep the family safe as far as your computer activities are concerned. In October, we're gonna have a Self-Protection for Families event that's gonna talk all about not only securing the homes that we've already talked about, but also how to not be a victim, how to be safe, and also resources. And then, in November, we'll have a holiday preparation, which we always do, but this year, we also want to have a potluck party that will be open to everybody, and we hope to have that here at the community center. So that's what we have in store for the next 12 months. The way we communicate with our folks, one of the things that we do is we put out about 14 signs every month. We try to put them out the Friday before our meeting, and we take them up the Friday after our meeting, so they're not sitting around. Once in a while, we lose track of one, and it takes me a while to find it, but usually we get them all back, and they've actually worked pretty well. We've been pretty pleased this last few months. We've been averaging a little over 20 people to our meetings the last few months, and they seem to be seeing the signs. Another big help to us has been we are nearly 1,100 members on Nextdoor now for our neighborhood. So 3,100 households, 1,100 members, that's pretty darn good, and it's worked out really well for us. And we had 750 members last year, so it's growing, and it's actually probably our best source of communication, that in Facebook page. Some of the events we were involved in last year had to do with Kaiser Station and Area Sea Development, and we continue to look at that process and oversight of the development. We're excited about the theater coming to our area, and 'cause Kaiser Station is inside the Greater Gupsor Neighborhood Association. This year, well, every year, we try to attend the Kaiser Community Cleanup Center Cleanup. That was March 18th. Last year will be March 17th this year. Country Glen Park is always something that we try to pay attention to. We have a cleanup coming up this Saturday with the Clag Creek Watershed Council, and if they have an opportunity, they may get some work done at Country Glen, but they're gonna be focusing on Ben Miller Park. We've also been involved in the Kaiser Rotary Arboretum, which you'll hear about later, I'm sure, and National Light Out is something that we do every year. Last year, August 1st, if you remember, it was about 100 and some-plus degrees, and our attendance was about half of what we normally get. We had a little over 20 folks there. We usually expect 40 to 50, and we're gonna put a special emphasis on that this year. We're gonna try to make that a community event with all kinds of activities, even to the point of maybe somewhat of a community fair. So we've... We're kind of excited about that coming up. We have our Greater Gupsor Neighborhood Garage Sale every August. This year, it'll be August 7th, first Saturday of August, and then, of course, Kaiser Miracle of Christmas Lights. This year was December 2nd through the 26th. It was as many days as it can ever be, and it worked out great for us. The Chamber, Kaiser Chamber Commerce got the word out for us, and because of that, the three families that coordinate our effort, primarily involving Bridget Essel and Jessica Ratliff, they had some great statistics, a great program this year, and we had people calling in early October trying to sign up their groups because they weren't able to get on the year before. Again, we had more volunteers than we could use. What place, what project can you always, you know, say that about? And it's been great. They treat the volunteers really well. It's a great opportunity, and we hope that part will continue. We put up our snow cops on December 1st, and we took them down on December 27th. We didn't have any problems this year whatsoever. We're still looking for number nine, whoever's out there. And Highway Specialties, they provided the batteries for the snow cops like they do every year, and Kim and Carl Thatcher and Jeff Peterson from Highway Specialties has been a great help with all of us. We took a little poll that is... Bridget took a little poll, and 81% of the homes on the Christmas Light route this year had some kind of display. That may be from one string of lights to hundreds, but that 81%, and that's probably the highest we've ever seen. So that was pretty cool. Some of the numbers you may have heard, may not have heard. Last year was a new record with 20, almost $25,700. This year, we were able to raise $28,926, another new record.
That's awesome.
Last year, we raised 23,622 pounds of food. This year, we raised 27,180 pounds of food, another new record. We gave out 28,000 candy canes last year. We gave out 34,000 candy canes this year, and we had a... I can't remember their name right off the top of my head, but we had a person step forward and donate a bunch of candy canes, which is great, 'cause we buy the candy canes out of donations, so if we don't have to buy candy canes, that's more money to the food Basically, this year, we provided 110,000 meals, which is a new record for us, and since 1984, this event has received nearly $370,000 in donations, nearly 1.4... Excuse me, 350,000 pounds of food, nearly 1.4 million meals provided, and in 2017, we received the Oregon Association of Food Banks Hunger Buster Award. Again, I'd like to reintroduce Suzanne McConnell, and she'll talk to you about... Tell you about the board and make our request.
Suzanne McConnell, I'm a member. I live in Kaiser. I'm the president, and Mark Collier is the vice president.
She's from Louisiana, that's...
Am I supposed to say who used to be one? Okay. Julie Barker is the Secretary of Treasurer. Gerald Nichols is a Board Member-at-Large. Patty Tisher is a Board Member-at-Large. Larry Rotondo is a Board Member-at-Large, and Keith Faier?
Fager.
Faier is a Board Member-at-Large.
It's Louisiana.
The GGNA requests City of Kaiser recognition of the Greater Gupsor Neighborhood Association for 2018.
Thank you very much. Microphone. Are there any questions? The report from Greater Gupsor. Outstanding work, and welcome to you as a new president. I hope your year is a lot of fun. Without any questions, Counsel President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council accept the report and move that we extend recognition to the Greater Gupsor Neighborhood Association for an additional year for 2018.
Thank you. May I check in that?
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council accept the report from the Greater Gupsor Neighborhood Association and extend recognition for an additional year. Any discussion? Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now I feel guilty for all the candy canes I ate. On my... I think I had three shifts. I'm really sorry. I won't eat any more next year.
Oh, that's all right. Putting in three shifts is much more than you share.
Thank you.
All right. No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Thank you. Have a great year. Thank you for inviting me in January. I had a wonderful time visiting with everybody and hope to visit with you again soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so they are hearing voice, but no picture. All right. So for folks who are watching on television, we still do not have picture. We do have technical difficulties. Is it still under repair?
Yes.
Okay. So we could try one more agenda item to see if we can get picture up, or we can jump right into the presentation. Should we go ahead? Okay. Let's go ahead and do one more present... One more agenda item, hopefully then get it up, because the reason I would like this to be for pictures is we have maps and so forth that also the school district has brought with them for this presentation. Also, if we're not able to get the audio or the video up, then we will be able to at some point get some of this posted to our website for information. All right, so moving on then with our agenda, we will go to committee reports, and we will go to the...
Match show.
The match show. Actually, I'm gonna start with the appointment recommendations. That will be item 5A, Appointment Recommendations from the Volunteer Coordinating Committee, City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Volunteer Coordinating Committee met on January 18th to review applications and interview candidates for openings on several city committees. That committee is recommending the following applicants for appointments. Parks Advisory Board, Zaira Flores Marin and Donna Bradley to positions 1 and 4 respectively. Traffic Safety Bike Ways Pedestrian Committee, Debbie DeBlossy to... I'm sorry, Michael... Debbie. It's not even close. Michael DeBlossy to position number 3. Is recommended City Council accept the Volunteer Coordinating Committee recommended appointments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions on the staff report? Counsel President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council accept the recommendation of the Volunteer Coordinating Committee and appoint Zaira Marin and Donna Bradley to positions 1 and 4 on the Parks Advisory Board, and Michael DeBlossy to position 3 on the Traffic Safety Bike Ways and Pedestrian Committee.
My second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council accept the recommendation of the Volunteer Coordinating Committee and appoint Zaira Flores Marin and Donna Bradley to positions 1 and 4 on the Parks Advisory Board, and Michael DeBlossy to the Traffic Safety Bike Ways Pedestrian Committee, position number 3. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent, and we welcome them to our volunteer committees.
I have an update. Voice and video are streaming live on our website, so... Or on the web version of this, so we have that. They are still working on the video for TV, but voice is going over.
Okay. So we will have video... We do have a video going up, and that will also be on kaisertv.com for people to view both now and to download later.
Correct.
Great.
So...
With that then, I would like to then thank the school district representatives for being patient with our technical difficulties, and we are glad to have you with us tonight. For those who are listening and watching, we are pleased to have people from the Salem Kaiser School District come to do an informational presentation. This is an opportunity for people in our community to learn about one of our partner agencies, which is the Salem Kaiser, or as like we like to say, the Kaiser Salem School District, that provides public education for the students in our community. So we are glad to have you here tonight, and I'll let you do your self-introductions and get underway. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clark, councilors and staff. My name's Mike Wolf. I'm the chief operations officer for the Kaiser Salem School District tonight.
Good job.
And I have with me previous board member and previous board chair Nancy McMorrisodics, and she'll speak at the end about things that I can't. So we'll start with that. Let me orient you to the information that you have in front of you. You'll see a flyer, front and back, that's got a description of all of the categories that are in the bond, and it's got the information to include the projected levy rate for the bond at $619.7 million. And then there's also a more detailed list that's one pager, just one side, and it's sort of the fun facts or fast facts of the bond as well. And you also should have a packet. It's called our School Profile Sheets. It's a packet with all of the schools in the McNary feeder system. And what's... What we like about this, and hopefully you'll feel the same way, is you start with Clearlake, obviously, and you have a description of the school. You have a little bit of information there. You have the improvements that are listed that will be included in the bond, and then you have enrollment projections over about a 20-year period, so you can kind of see what the enrollment forecasts are in the next 10, 15, and 20 years. And then with that, since we have limited time, we'll stay on track with the presentation itself, and you have the slides. I'd like to start with just the basic overview of the presentation, and we want to talk about the final bond package, the summary. You have the information as well that you can look at as I go through this. Just a quick review of the bond development process, how we got to where we are, a little bit of history of the Kaiser Salem bonds, and what comes next. And so the slide that has the copy of the flyer on it gives you all the information that we just talked about. This number is 619.7 million. That's most of the bonds that we issue are no longer than 20 years in duration. So as I know that you deal with that as well, there are bonds, obviously, that can be of less duration, but we typically do not go longer than 20 years when we let our bonds. And it's an estimated levy rate increase of $1.24 per thousand of assessed value at this point. And you have a pie chart, the next slide, that kind of shows you how it's broken down in the major categories, which are basically addressing space and overcrowding. We have our career in technical education and science program enhancements. We have music. We have seismic safety, security, future maintenance. We want to make sure that everyone understands that in the 2008 bond, we had about $160 million that was dedicated towards deferred maintenance. We don't have a deferred maintenance issue in our district at this point. That's not to say that over time, those issues don't begin to accumulate, but right now, we're talking about future maintenance issues. And so what that means is in the next 10 years, how many roofs, how many mechanical systems, how many HVAC systems will need to be repaired, but they haven't been neglected to this point. So I wanted to make sure that everyone knew the 2008 bond took care of that. And then we have technology and ADA improvements in the bond as well. Wanted to talk a little bit about the bond development process. This is about a three-year proposition for us. We started with 2005, getting ready for Full Day Kender in our district, and we produced a long-range facility plan update, and by ORS 195-110 by law, all large school districts are required to do that. In Oregon, you may be interested to know that a large school district is 2,500 students. So that makes the Kaiser Salem School District a mega district, and so with 65 schools, you can see that there's quite a bit of needs that accumulate over time. The needs that we identified were based on the student population projections over the next 10, 15, and 20 years, and we relied on Portland State University's Population Research Center to do that. And so we presented the long-range facility plan to our board, and they accepted the report and asked us to pull together a Citizens Facilities Task Force. And I'm happy to say that Nate Brown was involved in that, as was Danielle Bethel in the audience, and they can probably attest to the fact that we did a page turn on every page in the documents and rolled through a lot of content areas. And they presented recommendations to our board that totaled $766 million worth of recommendations. So the board accepted the report from the Citizens Facilities Task Force and then asked us to conduct a community poll, a survey, to test the support in the community, and we're happy to say that as is typically the case, or has been over the past several decades, the Kaiser Salem communities are very, very supportive of the district. And so this was no different, however, very cost-conscious as well. So 766 million was a large number, is a large number, and the polling doesn't support an amount that high, quite frankly, but did support, for the first time in decades, the notion that people were willing to pay more in assessed value. In the past, the results have come back that would say very supportive as long as the assessed value doesn't increase, as long as the... I'm sorry, as long as the levy rate doesn't increase. So this was the first time that we've received polling results that actually stated that people were willing to pay more, but within a limit, within a range of approximately $1.51 to $2.50 more per thousand of assessed value. So the board asked us to revise and reduce the package, and we were able to do that, bringing it down to around $620 million. And that was anywhere between $1.29 and $1.38 per thousand of assessed value. So after that, that was basically our base bond proposal. There was no final decision at that point. The board asked us to conduct more input and community and staff input meetings and special reports, and so we did that. There were community listening sessions in every feeder system. We held one at McNary. I think several of you attended that as well. We had a seismic panel review that took a look at where we were as a district with the seismic issues. We talked about land acquisition. We also talked about our special education program and the fact that we had a strategic analysis done on our program, and one of the major features was that we have a lot of our students with special needs that don't attend their neighborhood program or their neighborhood schools. And so one of the ways to rectify that, particularly at the high school level, is by adding additional special ed classrooms at the additions at the high schools. And so that allows us to ensure that our students at least end their career at their neighborhood high school, and we think that's pretty important. All that to say, there was about an additional $60 million worth of needs after the 620 base bond proposal that the board considered. So really, if you go back to the 766 million recommendations from the task force and the 60 million of additional needs that the board addressed, that's over $825 million worth of needs that the board addressed, and then asked us to keep it within 620 million, which we did. So the recommendation and the approved amount for the bond is at 619.7 million. That's a $1.24 levy rate per thousand assessed value. One thing, though, that I wanted to make sure everybody understood was during the task force deliberation, we knew that if we do nothing in this district in less than 10 years, we won't have enough space for over 1,300 high schoolers. That includes leaving all of the old end-of-life portables that are currently in existence in use. If you take those portables out of the system, we would not have enough space for over 2,200 high schoolers in less than 10 years. Sounds like a new high school. We deliberated on that notion very long and very carefully in the task force, and the recommendation was instead of building a new high school in our district, which would have created a disruption throughout every feeder system, we wouldn't, right? Because how do you populate a 2,200-student high school? You've got to move students around. The more sustainable plan, and actually a cheaper plan, was to expand existing high schools to the 2,200 capacity. So that means McNary being expanded to 2,200. You see the schematic designs around the room, and you can take a look at McNary's conceptual design. We also have Claggett Creek. We have Cummings. We have Kaiser and Gupsor as well. Those are the five major projects, capital improvement projects in the McNary system. Every school, though, and you can look at that in your packet, every school has work that will be conducted over the next 10 years or so, actually, less than 10. And so adjusting to the 2,200 model was a significant, significant recommendation for the district that came from the task force. I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood how that came to be. And then briefly, I see my time is running up, and I want to leave some for Nancy as well. Just a quick history of the 2008 bond. That was $242 million. That built four schools, three elementary, one middle, and we were able to provide repair and renovation projects, deferred maintenance projects at every school in the district twice, and some schools three times with that money. So about 160 million went to deferred maintenance, which is why we say we really don't have a deferred maintenance issue at this point. I would also like to let you know that a new high school today costs about $250 million for one structure, if I hadn't said that already. The next couple of slides just show you the levy rates that we have, the current levy rates, and as you know, when you have debt, long-term debt, you kind of stack the different issuances over time to come up with the combined levy rate. This sort of gives you an idea of where we're heading. And then the next one is the 2008 proposed bond and the levy rate increase. The economic impact, I think it's a just a basic rule of thumb that for every dollar a capital improvement project like this program spends in a community, it can turn three to six times in the community as people spend throughout the local economy. So even on the low end, we're talking almost $2 billion over a five-to-seven-year period in the general economy, okay? And then what comes next is the board will vote on the title and the resolution on the 13th of this month, and...
That's long ago. Just keep going.
And... Oh, I have another 10 minutes. That's awesome.
No, no. But you've been interesting to listen to, so they're willing to consider... Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you.
We would very much like to hear the conclusion here.
I'm wrapping up. It's the last slide right here. We will conduct additional meetings in each feeder system in April, so there'll be another chance for feedback. Remember to vote or update your registration. The last day to register is April 24th. Ballots are mailed April 25th, and the election is May 15th. I'd love to turn it over to Nancy McMorrisodics for a brief conclusion.
Well, what I've... Sorry, I turned that off so people wouldn't hear my papers rustling. I'd like to press pause to let people ask questions on what you have just presented in terms of the numbers and how we got here. So does anybody on the council have a question? Counsel Herrera?
No, I probably know this, but there's two new high school gymnasiums, correct? In the bond?
Yes, actually, there's two new auxiliary gyms and one new main gym.
Auxiliary gyms. Now, where are those located?
There'll be an auxiliary... A new auxiliary gym at McNary. There'll be an auxiliary, a new auxiliary gym at McCay, and then North will have an entirely new main gym and new auxiliary gym. So we'll demolish the existing structure and build a new one.
I'm sorry, also, could you touch a little bit on McNary's CTE program? The expansion or the?
Yes, yes. CTE at each of the six comprehensive high schools increases by two classrooms. One large, which will be an equipment-intensive-type CTE program, yet to be determined, and one basic, like, general education CTE, like, business or computer lab. But essentially, this bond increases to 12 additional classroom spaces for CTE programs throughout the district.
Thank you very much.
And right now, the district, if I remember correctly, has somewhere along the lines of 30 plus, 36?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine?
Not counting CTEC.
So, and then plus CTEC for career technical education. And I know that we've heard a great deal about workforce development and people remembering taking shop classes and so forth. This is not your grandfather's shop classes, as I've seen at least at CTEC.
That's right.
These are high-wage preparation programs, as I've seen them.
That's right. And one other note briefly is, for students that engage in CTE programs with a focus, their graduation rate is between 87 and 90%, which is well above the state average.
Well, and overall, the numbers just came out, and this is probably a little bit off the topic, but the Salem Kaiser School District saw a 2% increase in graduation in this last year, which is a very nice number to see, and it's going in the right direction.
Thank you.
So happy about that. So in terms of McNary, because we've had several folks in our area that have been very concerned about the, not only the student population capacity, but also parking. Could you address that, please?
Sure. I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
When you look at the conceptual design, what you'll see on the bottom is a notion that we intend, our plan is to relocate the softball fields in the main entrance. And we're looking for property adjacent to the school as we speak. But the plan is to secure that property, relocate the softball and soccer fields, and then completely reconfigure the entire entrance of the McNary complex. Because what we do know is that it's a mix of pedestrians and buses and student vehicles and parent vehicles and bicyclists. It's not how we would design it today, but it wasn't designed today. It was designed in the 50s.
What about the parking?
Part of that, yes, there is parking involved here.
Good.
Part of reconfiguring the front entrance and relocating those fields gives us the ability to add additional parking.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
As well as, it sounds like a totally new traffic pattern that would be more efficient and, most importantly, safer.
Safer.
For the students and everybody involved.
Yep.
So I really, I wanted to make sure that we addressed that, because that has been a concern of the neighborhood, and with the increasing population of students, that is going to continue to be an issue, because we want them to come.
Yes.
I understand that's the key to graduation.
And we want them to be able to walk to Cummings, which is also a part of the project, where Cummings has sidewalks all the way in.
That's good to hear. Okay, very good. Any other questions on the projects that they're looking at for our Kaiser Schools? Councilor Anderson, you have a?
I'll wait until.
Wait until Nancy's done.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you.
Mayor Clark, Council President Parsons, I'm Nancy McMorrisodics. I'm a resident of Salem, and I am here on behalf of the Yes for Kaiser-Salem Schools Bond PAC. And I'm just encouraging you, I know that the council can't take a position, but you are very much leaders in your community. The community looks up to you, and your support of this bond would be very meaningful. The community, the kids, need more classrooms. Some of our biggest overcrowding issues are here in Kaiser. So your community will very much benefit from this, and just making a pitch that Mike here isn't allowed to make, so.
No, he's not.
I could ask a question, actually, of either of you. Understanding that the build-out of the improvements is a decade, and that could, that's a long time, where is McNary in relation to that decade?
Actually, the program is front-loaded. We plan to, it's a very aggressive schedule, but it needs to be. We plan to deliver most of the program in the first three years. McNary is slated for a construction start in 2019. McNary is one of our first.
Right up front.
One of our first five schools to take care of, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Any additional questions? Councilor Anderson?
Thanks. Thanks, y'all, for coming here today. This is my second go-around or second or third with Mr. Wolf, so I appreciate you guys coming tonight. There's a lot in here, and, you know, I recall something that Michael had mentioned in another venue, but the last bond that the voters approved, to have that today, I think, would have been, that was about 200 and some-odd million, but today would have been like around 500, wasn't that correct?
With the?
Value-wise?
You could pick either 5, 6, or 7% annual escalation over that period, and it adds up pretty quick.
So just a couple of comments and then a question here, or two questions, actually. First of all, you know, the plan, as I've looked at it right now for McNary, I think is really outstanding to someone whose son went through McNary and dropped him off every single morning there in the parking lot, not on any other side streets, I would just underscore for the record. But, yeah, any improvement that can be brought to bear on that parking lot, not just for during the school day, but after hours as well. That gets really tight for concert season and so forth, so. But that is, I really like the plan that y'all have drawn up, that's just really outstanding. Secondly, the last remodels, I think, were absolutely remarkable. Our kids were at Whittaker when that was going on, and it was just amazing to see the crews come in after school was done. You know, the poor, I really felt for the teachers and administrators, because it's like pack up and get out, and then they did all of that magic during the summer months, and then they had, what was it, you said like two days before school?
Right.
Got back in, so that was really something else. But the remodel on that was really, really well done. It really just is like night and day in terms of walking through the hallways and everything, so.
Thank you.
Really appreciated that. The, oh, and then the final thing, I just think it's, I think it's a point worth making that what's being proposed here, I mean, a lot of the schools that are under consideration for upgrading, these are, you know, I kind of like to use the term legacy buildings. I mean, somebody had the thought, we got to build these at some point in time, and it's been a while since we've upgraded these things. So, you know, our kids and our teachers and educational staff are in those buildings, so it's really important that we take care of them and upgrade them. So just thought I'd throw that one out there as well. The two questions I've got is, you might want to expand a little bit on the item that, because I thought you did an exceptional job in the other meeting that we were in with respect to future maintenance. I think that can, that you might want to just expand on that a little bit, just, this is not something like we're hoping happens or just in case, but this is other things that need to happen with respect to the school district, not just at these individual schools.
Right, right, sure.
And then I've got one other question for you.
Okay. So again, I would use the Clear Lake on your profile sheets. When you look at the improvements that you see, HVAC systems, site drainage improvements, removal of end-of-life portables, those are all future maintenance issues that if we don't take care of them, they will become deferred. And so when you look at the future non-routine maintenance, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about the roofs, the mechanical systems, the HVAC systems, electrical, plumbing and such. And so this bond keeps the assets preserved, as opposed to falling behind, which is where we found ourselves in the 2008 bond, having to play catch-up.
And then I think there's also some other stuff, kind of more at the administrative level, that are things that really need to get addressed as well, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Yeah. In the 2008 bond, the title language was very limited to schools only. So we were not able, as a district, to spend any of that bond money on administrative building upgrades, deferred maintenance, or anything like that. And so as a typical example, we have our Technology Center that's in an old bowling alley off of State Street that's in a floodplain, and that's where our server farm is. So we're particularly interested in fixing that situation, and so this bond would allow us to do things like that.
Yeah, just little stuff like that.
That would not go well.
Final, just one other question I had, and that was with respect to, you know, the amount of work that's going to get done. I know there generally is a desire to use local businesses and contractors for that, and I don't know if you can talk at all about that at this point, and kind of what the, y'all have a plan or something along those lines?
Yeah. As in any public procurement, we always look for best value. And in many cases, that's your local contractors, for sure. And in a lot of cases, when you're looking at different types of construction techniques, like, let's say, anything outside of the normal design-bid-build, traditional competitive low bid, let's say, like a construction manager, general contractor, CMGC, those individual firms look to the local communities for the trade skills, because that's where the best value is. So in these types of large capital improvement projects, it's always best value, and in many cases, when you're doing the traditional design-bid-build, that would be competitive low bid. And so what we do is, we want to make sure that our local contractors understand how to do business with the district, because not everyone does. So we spend time in, on the front end, educating our local contractors about what's coming, you know, the type of teaming that they may see, or the type of direct bidding that they may be able to do and be successful. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Council President Parsons?
Thank you. This is great information, and I know we could talk all night about what you're going to do just with the Kaiser Schools. So what I would really like to propose is, Danielle Bethel's in the audience with the chamber. We have some community conversations coming up between, with the citizens in the chamber and the city, and I would really like to be able to see if we could have you guys come in and address, in a community conversation, have a forum about that. I mean, I don't know, Danielle, is that something that you guys could do on your calendar?
Yeah.
I would like to see that, because I think people want more than what you can give us tonight.
Sure.
And that just gives them the opportunity, maybe, to visit that.
Yeah, we'd love to. Would we be coordinating with Danielle, perhaps?
Yes, I think so, yes.
So that'd be with the Chamber of Commerce. I want to follow up on one of the questions from Councilor Anderson, and that's regarding contractors and bidding and so forth. And do you post all of your procurement contracts on ORPEN, the Oregon Procurement Information Network, or something similar?
We have, yeah, we have our own system that everyone, all the contractors in the local area are already registered. I say all, there may be a few that haven't got there yet, but we will definitely communicate with everyone to make sure that, again, that's part of how do you do business with the school district?
Well, exactly. And the increased outreach with COBID for the certified businesses that are women-owned, veteran, disadvantaged business enterprises, et cetera. So really making sure we loop in as many of our contractors as possible. It gives them that great experience working with the school district, keeps the money local, and builds that next generation of contractors we really want to keep in this community.
Yep.
Can I just make a comment that I think is important to raise as well? In the last bond, for every dollar spent, it brought about $6 into the community. You know, that was a very rough economic time, and this bond may not have that higher return, but it probably will be somewhere in the $3 to $4 for every dollar spent, being spent in this community, at our grocery stores, at our restaurants, you know, all of that. So it's a significant investment in our community as well as in our kids.
All right. Well, again, we thank you for your patience tonight with our technical issues, and the materials you brought will be uploaded with our packet. What Tracy Davis does is, after a meeting, the packets are reloaded with any materials we received during the meeting, so that will appear on our website. People want to see the materials you handed, and I know she got a copy. And then for any additional information, everything is on your website, and campaign stuff is on the campaign website.
Yes, yes. Unfortunately, it is yesforkaiserschools.com, okay?
No respect. No respect. But thanks again for being here and for listening to the members of the community on coming to the projects and the plans for the students.
Thank you. It was our pleasure.
All right, thank you.
We're happy to leave these if you see any value in leaving them, or we can take them with us tonight. You'd like to leave them for a little while? Okay. All right, well, they're yours.
Danielle can take them and use them for the community conversation.
That would be a good.
That would be a good thing.
Opportunity.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Now, back to our regularly scheduled program. Let's get back into committee reports. We had one committee report from a very patient person sitting in the back. Matt Lawyer's going to talk to us about the Claggett Creek Watershed Council and this wonderful project that happens Saturday morning, bright and early.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of the council staff. Good evening. Matt Lawyer, Kaiser resident. I'm going to try to keep this brief, because I've been accused of being long-winded.
Just too many good things to talk about.
It's not an accusation. You'd be laughing, that. So actually, Mr. Callier did a really good job of kind of doing a high-level update of some of the stuff we have coming up, but I just wanted to point out, this Saturday, we have the annual Ben Miller cleanup. This is not one of our more fun projects. It is dirty invasive species removal, getting down, removing blackberries. We'll get some backpack blowers, get all the leaves and stuff out, a lot of trash removal. But we're anticipating quite a few volunteers on that. That'll be 9:00 AM over at Ben Miller, which, if you're not familiar with it, is down near Claggett Creek Middle School. Clear it? Yeah, clearly, that's where my kids went. Anyways, always get that screwed up. And then coming up, as Mr. Callier alluded to on March 17th, we will be doing the annual Civic Center cleanup. It's going to be a lot of work. There will be the pre-pruning and everything that'll happen, probably the day before, but we'll get folks out there cleaning up the flower beds and just doing a general beautification. It's a really good project. We get a lot of folks out here. Last year, we had a 15-yard, 10 or 15-yard debris bin that we completely filled. The year before, we had 30 and almost filled it, but we had a lot more rubbish to take out two years ago. And then I'm really excited to talk about, and I'm going to ask Mr. Callier to come up really quick, because he's the expert, but on, I'm sorry?
I said, we're in trouble.
But on April 21st, the Claggett Creek Watershed Council, kind of in conjunction with Kaiser Rotary, will be holding our Earth Day event on April 21st, as I said, to celebrate the opening of the Kaiser Rotary Arboretum. I'm going to ask Mr. Callier to talk about that just really quick.
Thanks, Matt. Mark Callier, Kaiser, and yes, this last Saturday, at, some folks got there at 9:00, some of us got there at?
7:00.
7:00.
6:45.
At any rate, we planted 43 trees in the Phase 2 planting at the Kaiser Rotary Arboretum. This came about via a challenge by the Rotary International President for this year, challenging each Rotary Club to plant one tree for each Rotary member. Our involvement with the Claggett Creek Watershed Council, we knew that the City of Kaiser had a list of trees that they recommend for planting in an urban area, around your house, sidewalks, driveways, that kind of thing. And so that kind of locked together with the need for us to plant 76 trees or so, started the Kaiser Rotary Arboretum, and the idea of we could plant these trees, plant an example of each of the trees that City of Kaiser recommends. And we looked at all the parks, all 19 parks. We even started with Country Glen and Wilbur Bloom, Extension Agent in Marion County, for like ever, met us down there, took out his map, said, "This is probably the worst place you could ever plant all these trees." The water table grows incredible lawn down there, incredible soccer field grass, but the water table's about two inches from the top of the ground. So we ended up choosing the east side, southeast side of Kaiser Rapids Park, from the Lamont River, behind, to the west of the houses, moving north along to where eventually, well, we don't know how far we'll go, because every time we get a new Rotaryian who gets the permanent badge, they get to plant a tree. they get to plant a tree. So, we'll be continuing to do this for years to come. We will be having signage, which will identify where the trees are, what they are, how high they grow, what shade, what kind of ground, and all that kind of stuff. We'll have a couple kiosks where people can get pamphlets and explain all that. We'll have an information piece in the middle. And it's, if you haven't been out there, it's really looking pretty cool. It, we were able to plant, we had 85 volunteers Saturday. We had 63 in November 4th, when we did the first planting. They, in November 4th, we were done a little after 10:00. We were done about quarter to 10:00 this time. We planted 43 trees in about 40 minutes. It helped that Randy Miller and Herc Equipment loaned us a Bobcat with Randy driving it with a 36-inch auger, so we didn't have to dig any holes. We just moved, we just moved the trees over and planted them at the right height, threw all the dirt back in, and it was, it was a great effort. We didn't have any rain in November. We didn't have any rain on Saturday morning. So, it worked out really well. And so, it's going to be, it's going to be an incredible project. I can't wait to see the spring and everything start coming out, and it's going to be pretty cool.
So, in addition to the 85 volunteers, that included, you know, Principal Jespersen at McNary, and Jeremy Everett, one of the science teachers, got a whole bunch of the McNary kids out there. We had about 10 kids from Whittaker come over, and that was part and parcel, because we brought on a young lady, eighth grader, from Whittaker to be on the Watershed Council as our student liaison. So, she made posters and gave it out. She's doing the same for the Ben Miller cleanup. And so, we're really encouraged to see the two schools and hopefully get Claggett on board here really soon, really engaging and becoming a lot more involved in these projects. And it's a revitalization of that volunteer spirit for our youth. And so, we're really excited about it. I finally dragged my kids out to something, which was quite interesting. In fact, I think I owe Bruce and Council Anderson and Mark some babysitting money for that last hour and a half, but it was a lot of fun. And I just, I want to take a second.
I just enjoyed all the stories he had about you.
They're probably true. I just want to take a moment and really recognize the council and thank you all for all the time you guys put in, you know, between sitting here tonight and all the extra, all the extra meetings. But you also come out to these events, and specifically, Mayor Clark, you're out there at 7:30 in the morning, cutting things off the bottom of the trees. And then, Council Reed and Council Anderson, you guys were both out there throughout the duration of the project, really, really worked hard. And it's just going above and beyond. And that's just one specific event, but I mean, anything and everything. Council Ryan was huge with the, with the parks fee discussion, getting all the survey stuff, you know, and Council Herrera and Council Parsons. I mean, you guys are all, what's that?
That wasn't it.
No, but you guys spend a lot of time in the community, and, you know, it's a volunteer position, and I appreciate it. And I know that the folks that we have volunteering with us really appreciate seeing, seeing their leadership out there helping out. And, you know, it's more time away from your families and things like that, but thank you. So, we'll see you all on the 17th.
Yeah, yeah. It's, again, another event coordinated by the Claggett Creek Watershed Council and sponsored by Kaiser Rotary. I wanted to say, we had about 12 Rotarians out there Saturday. I also saw some Parks Board members out there, which is really great, great to see. And although we got it all done in an hour, it took a couple days of preparation to get there. So, it's always really cool. You know, it's kind of like the big toy, "Yeah, we got it done in six days," but it took us like two years to get ready for it.
Two and a half, yeah.
So, you know, it's, it better work great.
Well, we all know that an overnight success takes years of preparation. So, we very much appreciate your work and your organization to help these things happen, as well as getting out there and getting muddy with everybody else. And it, what a great add to the park. We needed to put in some, some sort of vegetation in there as part of the buffer. What's more beautiful than new trees that will be blooming for years to come?
Of course, maybe.
Yeah.
I believe that's supposed to be coming out, as part of the ongoing maintenance, but.
Yep. So, it's just, what a legacy. And I told the students there that they could walk by and look at those trees in years to come, and hopefully bring their families out there and go, "I helped plant that tree. I helped make this happen." And I think that's wonderful for them to take that pride now and be able to enjoy it for years to come. So, fabulous. All right, so we have dates, and we'll get them out on Facebook, and bring your friends, and always bring your gloves, because you're going to need them.
Address for the weather.
Address for the weather.
We don't, we don't stop because it's raining. This is Oregon for guys.
The rain's nice, because it actually washes them out off, but yeah.
It does help. Thank you so much. And thank you for your patience with waiting tonight. And now, we'll get to public testimony. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for a public hearing. We have one public hearing of the agenda tonight, and that is for a liquor license change, change of ownership, trade name for Neighborhood Market. So, is there anybody who would like to speak to the council tonight on something other than that? Moving on to the public hearing, on the liquor license change of ownership, trade name for Neighborhood Market, I'll open the public hearing. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On January 4th, 2018, the city received an application for a change of ownership and trade name for the liquor license, excuse me, at the Neighborhood Market located 711 Shamawa Road North in Kaiser. The application is for a off-premises liquor license, and the applicant is Gurpreet Cower. As required by Kaiser ordinance, a public hearing was scheduled, notice was published, and mailed to all property owners within 200 feet of the establishment. Kaiser Police Department reports a clear background check on the applicant and has no reason to recommend denial of the application. In addition, Kaiser Community Development Department, thank you, finds the location of the establishment to be properly zoned and had no additional comment on the application. It is recommended the public hearing be opened, as it was, to allow testimony from the applicant or other interested individuals, and upon completion, the hearing be closed. As further recommended, City Council approved the application for the Neighborhood Mini Mart under the guidelines as established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinances of the City of Kaiser. The recommendation will then be forwarded to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And for the record, it's the one on the corner of Newburgh and Shamawa.
7-Eleven.
Thank you. 7-Eleven.
But not, not a 7-Eleven.
Not a 7-Eleven.
That's why I said 711.
I'll make it really clear.
Thank you. I move that the Kaiser City Council recommend approval of the application for the Neighborhood Mini Mart under the guidelines as established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinance of the city in Kaiser, and we recommend that it be approved through the Oregon Liquor Control Commission.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council recommend approval of the application for the Neighborhood Mini Mart under the guidelines as established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinances of the City of Kaiser, and to forward this recommendation to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for final approval. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. I forgot to close the public hearing, didn't I?
Oh, yes.
I did. So, the public hearing is closed. All right. And we can straighten out the order in which that needed to happen, because Tracy's really good at that. All right. I'm just delighted that this door is staying open. It's in my neighborhood, and it's been a, just a place that the kids can go get a soda or something. And it's just been a neat fixture in our community, and I'm glad it's going to continue with the new ownership and be there for the future. So, awesome. That takes us past public hearings. So, let's get into, we have nothing on the agenda under administrative actions. So, Council President Parsons, would you please read the consent calendar?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We have six items on the consent calendar tonight. A is a resolution authorizing the city manager to award and enter into an agreement with BRX Inc. for construction of the Kaiser Station Area B Access Project. B is a resolution approving extension of the cable television franchise agreement with Comcast of Oregon Inc., formerly known as Far West Communications Inc., DBA AT&amp;T Cable Services. C is a resolution adopting policies for placement of informational signs at the vocal point. D is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase 2018 F-350 and two Ford F-250 vehicles for the Parks Division of the Public Works Department and authorizing disposition of surplus property. E is a resolution exercising the power of eminent domain right-of-way services. F is approval of the January 16th, 2018 City Council regular session minutes.
Thank you very much. Are there any polls?
None.
Council President Parsons.
I recommend approval of the consent calendar.
Second?
The consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. This takes us to council liaison reports. Council Anderson, I'll go ahead and start with you tonight.
Sweet. Alrighty. Just, I'm going to zip through these if I, much as I can. Just the awesome, and we had still Mr. Lawyer's in the back, but being at the Kaiser Chamber First Citizens Banquet, that was awesome. To be a great community event to all come around. I think I was there, wasn't I?
You were there.
I was there, that's right.
I saw you there.
Anyway.
It's been a busy, it was a busy month.
Everybody was there.
No, I'm, little story.
Oh.
Anyway, that's okay. And then, Mr. Callier, well, I just, I think it's worth underscoring the incredible people that get recognized, two of whom we saw before our panel tonight, because that's what makes Kaiser awesome. So, really appreciate them. Of course, they also mentioned February 3rd, being at the tree planting at Kaiser Rabbit Park. That was great to be able to participate in that. And then, later that evening, I'm going to bring in my little music thing that I always like to announce, because it is always awesome to go to the all-city honor concerts. And that evening at North Salem High was our middle school choirs and choir, honor choir, honor orchestra, and honor band. And that was absolutely outstanding. I just point out for folks' calendar that coming up, February 17th, will be the high school honor choir, orchestra, band concert. And if you've never ever been to that, I heartily recommend that you go to it. It's really, really special. It's February 17th at North Salem High. And I think you have to probably purchase tickets when you get there, but it's just really a special evening. We've done it for years now, and I just heartily encourage. It's just, and they have a great way that they end it all, and I won't spoil that for you. I'll let you enjoy that. And then, just finally, I'll just wrap up by saying that today is, marks the beginning or convening of the Oregon 2018 Legislative Session. Hopefully, it'll get done before March 9th. Thank you.
Hang on for the ride. Council Herrera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also wanted to, you know, we had Matt up here, and I wanted to congratulate him for all his hard work. I've been witnessing it through the liaison of the parks. And I only wish that I could still help with the planning, but I, and I did a lot of that when I, I have no ability with my hands, that's why I don't show up. But I really do appreciate, because I know the hard work it takes for you guys to do that. And Matt, thank you very much for all your hard work. And same thing with the First Citizen, who's not here anymore, but former First Citizen. We all attended the Winter Sports Banquet. I believe it was three of us there, which is very nice. I got to meet, sit with one of my heroes.
Four.
Four of us. David Bell, who was there with us, and, and you probably don't remember this, but the Mariners at one time had the, the team that had the most wins was when David Bell was there, and so was Edgar Martinez. But anyway, David Bell is one of four families that had three generations play in the majors. And that was just an honor. And Gus Bell was his grandfather, and Buddy Bell, which everybody knew, the name Buddy Bell, was his father. And I mean, I remember watching his father, he was one of my idols, and here I'm talking to him. Also, we had the, the COG, City.
Council Governments.
The Council of Governments.
Council Governments. And a special thanks to our great Commissioner Carlson, who was recognized that night. And I've always also witnessed being on the safety, her leadership, and she does so much. And I really like people to do a lot for people, and she's one of them. She's one of my heroes, so. Also, we also had the grand opening of Walmart, which I think.
Ware Mart.
Did I say Walmart?
Yes, you did.
Am I, am I on TV?
Ware.
I meant Ware Mart.
Yes.
And I couldn't, I haven't even gone in there, because I couldn't get in there. But I guess, I heard it was pretty good, and people agreed with me. And I also wanted to thank some local athletes, now that we're here, that are on the American Family Insurance All USA Watch. And one of them is a young lady, I've known since she was a baby, and her name is Anna Coronado, who tends, lives here in Kaiser, but attends Blanchett. And she's like an All-American last year as a junior, and she was an All-State Player sophomore when they won the state championship. And she's getting a lot of looks. And also, a local young man from McNary by the name of Chandler Cavill. And he's also a senior wing, and that kid's fun to watch also. His dad was a great player here at Oregon State and a great McNary player. We had the points of interest meeting also, which went really well. Nothing really to talk about that, except we're still continuing on some research. And I really am pleased with the, the participation of our members, and it's, it's really fun to be there, actually, now. I enjoy that. Also, we have a, let's see, last but not least, where's the, oh, what's the last thing we had here? Oh, yeah. Tomorrow night is, excuse me, that's Wednesday night is Latino Parents Night at McNary, and we'll be there doing our presentation. But Mr. Cameron, I'd like to congratulate him for his hard work in organizing that. Parents Nights, there're going to be all kinds of activities and, and some good Mexican food, so come and join. Anybody who wants is welcome. But thank you very much. That's it for me.
Fabulous. Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a few things also. So, I also attended the Volcanals Banquet, and it was a very nice job. The food was very good. So, you know, that's always a good thing to go to. And you meet some fabulous people, or, or, you know, sometimes you don't even see these people till once a year, but it was good to get to know them. Went to a personal policy meeting with the mayor, just talked about, well, what we always talk about, personnel.
Policies.
And policies, yes. Attended the Kaiser Festival Advisory Board meeting two Mondays ago, because we had five Mondays in January. So, it seems like it's been a long time since we've met. But we redid our mission statement. We're going to suggest some bands to, clients, more local bands, to see if we can get them in the concert series. And we're just doing lots of different things now. We've got a great group of people, and they got great ideas. So, just, you'll just stay tuned for those. And also, went to a Habitat Home dedication for the Army Veteran a couple weeks ago. We had Color Guard there. I mean, it was, it was a great presentation. He got presented a flag and, you know, lots of tears and things. But it was a great, that was a great thing for him. He got his keys, so now he's moved in, I think, already, and so he's ready to go. Also, we failed to mention that while Ware Mart opened last week, there were two other new businesses on River Road that opened that I would just like to mention. The Human Bean, I mean, these guys opened without the fanfare. So, Human Bean opened, and Aroma's Restaurant up by where Jade Garden used to be, Royal Pub. I've been in both of those already, and they're very nice. So, I would suggest people go and visit those businesses. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Council Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Pretty much, I went to what everybody else was going to this month. And it was a great, great month for, for celebrating the successes of the community in many ways, and that was really a lot of fun. We also had a Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association meeting, our, and that was, that was a lot of fun. We are having our annual meeting in March, and so we're going to really be pushing to get that publicized a lot more and get a lot more people out there. But that was, we made some progress. We're making some really good connections with the schools, with Weddell in particular, and how we can help support them. And so, that was a great conversation. And so, we look forward to continuing to build that. Tree planting was great fun. Next, oh, and Mayor and I also attended the Habitat for Humanity for the other family that went in there. And that was, that was a very wonderful celebration as well. And a big thank you to all the many, many people who put in so many hours for that program. That's a, that's a very good program, and it shows the quality of our community. And so, that was really a fun thing to see. Also, last Saturday, we had the Student Art Display going up at the Kaiser Art Association. And that was, was really impressive to see the student artists. And they were presented with the different awards at that time, and they got to talk about their work, and just a lot of really, really good things going on. And so, that was, that was fun to see the student artists in their element. And I encourage you that that display will be going on throughout the month of February. So, go on over and take a look at that. The Ben Miller Park Cleanup has been mentioned, and I would just heartily endorse participation in that, if you possibly can. Again, 9:00 at Ben Miller Park. I am not going to be able to attend, because I'm going to be participating in the FBI La competition going on at McNary High School this Saturday. So, that is another excellent. competition going on at McNary High School this Saturday, so that is another excellent thing that our community is doing for our region, so that, that is, that will be something to look forward to as well. That's about all.
Fabulous. All right. Lots going on, especially with our students. Councilor Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too attended several events together. We talked about last meeting, everything kind of fell at once, so the COG dinner, the, what's the acronym, please, so I don't get in trouble?
The Willamette Valley Council of Governments.
Council of Governments, thank you. And that was interesting, and you did an excellent job presenting and, and showing people, you know, your appreciation. I really appreciated that, and being there with all of you. And then I was honored to be nominated as a speaker for the Salem Kaiser School District Bond Measure, so I'll be traveling around and talking to different groups about the bond, which I'm really excited to support. I also am coming up with Marion County Breakfast this coming, this next one.
Yeah, that's.
I'm looking forward to that and catching up with them as well, and I know they have a actual luncheon coming up, a state of the address for, a state of the county, and I don't remember the name, but I, just a reminder, because I just saw it today on email, so. And then also, I also attended the Windows, Winter Sports Banquet, and what I liked about that wasn't so much the speakers, as much as just supporting our local volcanoes, because I think they're doing a great job, and that new Kaiser care that they have deserves to be recognized by all of us, which I think is exciting. And then also, the banquet for the First Citizens was excellent, and I was so proud of all the, all the nominees and award winners. We're lucky to have so many great people in our community. And just one more business to add to your list, because I have the same list, but Euros opened as well in the Birdie's Bistro parking lot, and so, so we've lots of new, exciting businesses to celebrate, so. And I made it through Ware Mart three times, so patiently, but it truly is a great thing for our community, so welcome. Thank you.
And then I would just want to let people know that any sort of speaking that any of us do regarding any ballot measure for another agency is as an individual, that the council has not and does not intend to take a position on this or any other bond measure, so I do want to clarify that, that we will speak as individuals only. Just a couple things to add. I know, my goodness, lots been going on. I was able to be at the Greater Gubser Neighborhood Association meeting when they presented the check to the Marion Polk Food Share, and it was absolutely overwhelming. Last, you know, the previous year was a new record, and this one just blew the top off of it, and most importantly, more and more people in our community are being fed and taken care of year-round, so way to go to the families who put up with all the traffic, who put up their lights, and to, and open up their neighborhood to welcome the, our greater area to come and enjoy that, celebrate the season, and be generous. On the 19th, I went to the Safe Corporation Salem Chamber Ag Dinner, and it was a great celebration of our agricultural industries and heritage here in the Willamette Valley. There was a young man from Future Farmers America, the FFA, who received statewide recognition and a scholarship from PGE. That was wonderful to see him receive that award, and what an incredible speaker this young man was. Very poised, very well spoken, and he's going to go far, so it was wonderful to see him and also learn more about what's happening in agriculture here in our valley, which is one of our number-one industries. On the 23rd, I attended SCATS, which is the Salem Kaiser Area Transportation Study, which is our Metropolitan Planning Organization for Federal Transportation Dollars. I'm still the chair. Didn't put my hand down fast enough, and actually, I'm very honored to be working with this group of representatives from Transit, Marion County, Polk County, City of Salem, and the City of Turner, and the Salem Kaiser School District. So, we are reviewing projects for the Transportation Improvement Plan. There's a public hearing scheduled for the 27th of this month. Comments are encouraged, and also, we're reviewing the work plan for 2018, and we will be adopting that on the 27th of March. On the 25th, I attended the Marion Polk County Medical Society Annual Meeting and Awards Dinner. This is a great organization that helps support the people who take care of us, so they provide support services, professional development, and other services and collaboration for medical profession, medical professionals here in the Marion Polk area. They've been great partners with Kaiser. We have a number of organizations and medical services here in Kaiser, so we are a leader now in providing a diversity of medical services, and we hope to add more. I always encourage them, you want to open a business, come to Kaiser, we're a great place to, to be. The next night, I spent three nights in a row at the Willamette Mission Mill Heritage Museum, so this was the second one. This was the Willamette Heritage Museum Reception, and the opening of the Arrivals Display. This is a must-see, folks. This has not only the display for Thomas Dove Kaiser and the Kaiser family, which settled here, and mega kudos to the Kaiser Heritage Museum for putting that display together. It's beautiful. The one that really got my attention was one for a program I'd never heard of, but again, I'm, as people every bother me once in a while, I'm not a native of the state, so I did not study the history of Oregon, but I did not know about the Braceros Program during World War II, where employees came up from Mexico to help pick crops and save the harvest, so that food would be available for people, since so many of the workers that normally would have been out in the field were fighting in World War II. Washington County produced that display, great historical documentation, great information. I really recommend people to see it. I have also talked with the Kaiser Heritage Center folks. Tammy Wild was there. She's going to get ahold of them and see if there's a connection with Kaiser, some of the farms here, if some of the farmers also were part of the Braceros Program, and see if we can piggyback on some of their research and celebrate that part of our heritage. So, stay tuned. I'm hoping that we'll get some good information on that. We've mentioned the two Habitat dedications. These are the two homes that complete Alexis Lane, just off of Windsor Island Road. The Wolfing Family, which is the veteran family, beautiful dedication for them with the, the new Director of Veterans Affairs, Sharon Blasi, from the state of Oregon, as well as Honor Guard to welcome them to our community. And then this last Saturday, the Ramos-Goska family, who moved in with their two beautiful and very artistically creative daughters, to their home as well, and it was a pleasure to be there with so many community members to welcome them to the Kaiser family. I also want to congratulate Commissioner Janet Carlson, who was honored at the Council of Governments Dinner. The award that she was given was the Gwen Van Damas Award for Outstanding Leadership in Regional Intergovernmental Affairs. That doesn't even begin to cover the kind of work she has done on behalf of so many of us through her career as a Marion County Commissioner and prior to that as a legislator. So, I want to thank her, both personally and on behalf of the city, for what she did to help things like the Big Toy happen, and so many other projects in our area that have made life for so many people better. I think one of the legacies that she can also look back on with great satisfaction is the Marion County Reentry Initiative. She has been absolute champion for that, and now the Marion County, or the Willamette Homeless Initiative. So, I want to thank her, and as she completes this term, she does not plan to run for another term, she will be retiring, which does not mean she'll be not doing stuff, she'll just be tired again doing other things. One last thing is I did meet with the new Homeless Initiative Program Coordinator. Her, her name is Ally Trichol, Trichol, sorry, Trichol. She started last week at the, at the Council of Governments, and she is hitting the ground running, working with and meeting with people throughout the community, and going to be bringing a work plan for the strategic plan to help bring better coordination, best practices to help people who are homeless and housing insecure. So, welcome, Ally. We are excited to have you here. It was a busy month. So, with that, that is all for right now. So, what we'll do is turn it over to our city manager and staff for other business. This time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members, or staff, an opportunity to bring new or old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tracy.
Thank you, but I don't have anything tonight.
Yeah?
Nothing either.
Chief.
We hired two off of the police fee. They will start the academy March 19th. We have two more who have already passed background. We have three others who are in background. We're only looking to hire two more. That's a total hiring of six. You know, the police fee only covered five. We had one other retirement, and that was Dave Babcock. We have many other looming retirements, by the way, but none in process. In any event, the fee is looking good. It's producing good recruits for us. Thank you.
Great news.
Bill. Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Nate. Just really quickly, I wanted to give a status to the council about the progress of our grants. Our cost of growth, which all of you participated in, you were interviewed by our consultants, representatives of OTAC, and remember that, though it is an acronym, it is so established, nobody knows what it stands for. Anyway, so I have, just the other day, I received the draft outline of the report that they're working on. I'll be going through that. If you have any specific concerns or questions, by all means, get those to me. We also met last Tuesday as the kickoff group for the, the next project that we are working on, and that is the Kaiser Revitalization Project, and that's our arterials, and looking at the zoning, looking at the obstacles. We have supplied the names of at least four individuals in the community who are connected to the market. We're doing a market analysis along River Road and Cherry, and trying to put together the picture of what the market background is for our, our community, our businesses, and our commercial development along our arterials. So, those projects are moving forward, and we are working hard to supply the information necessary to our consultants, and they are in the background, working away, so just wanted you to know that.
Shannon.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. That takes us to written communications. I have got two tonight. One is from, regarding a property 4810 Gobert Avenue. Several weeks have passed since the house fire on this property. There have been no signs of improvement. Listed below are the property problems and nuisances which the neighborhood can no longer tolerate. Currently, two RVs are parked on the property for more than 30 days with occupants living in them, and large piles of trash materials have been accumulating for several weeks. Generator has been running 24/7 for, for several weeks. The Kennedy Grade School Neighborhood and Northview Terrace Neighborhood are requesting that the city and county take action. Thank you for your consideration. So, I'm gonna give this to you, city manager, for follow-up.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much, and we appreciate the people writing in and letting us know, so we can follow up on their concerns. The other is. Attention, Mayor Clark, I would like to voice my dissatisfaction with the addition, additional $8 a month attached to my water and sewer billing, which is going to pay for the parks rec and police. I've been a resident and homeowner of this city for over 25 years. Shouldn't the citizens of this city have a say in this matter which concerns our pocketbook? And there is not, is there not something you can do to stop this additional fee? It might seem little to you, but when your income depends on social security income, it becomes a concern. Thank you, Jean Tites from Arcade Avenue. So, I want to thank Mr. Tites for writing to me. I have written him back, and to let him know that his concerns are important, and there is no dollar that comes from the people of Kaiser to be entrusted to the use of the city that is unimportant. We take every dollar seriously, and we understand that there are people in our community who have income limitations, and also who are older, and we do have programs in place right from the get-go to make sure that those needs can be addressed, and encouraged him to reach out to our finance department if he is in need of those services. So, thank you so much for writing. Appreciate that. So, agenda input, we have February 12th work session, and I would ask that we go ahead and cancel that. There's a number of events that evening, including a rescheduled town hall with Congressman Schrader. Yes, and you will be doing other things out of state. I also have another meeting that evening with the, regarding the Oregon Association. Anyways, an aviation meeting that will be happening downtown, and legislators who will be meeting as well, so that's where I will be at, work-related. So, unless there's a reason to keep that on the agenda, okay, well, you will consider that canceled. And then the following council meeting will be on Tuesday, February 20th, because of the Monday holiday for President's Day. 7:00 PM, regular session, and Council President Parsons will be chairing that meeting. All right. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none, it is 8:38, and we are adjourned.